Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm Attorney Edwin Ferguson, your school board member for District Seven. This is my second town hall. And today, what we're going to talk about is summer success. So what we're going to do, myself and Dr. Glenda Sheffield, who is the Chief Academic Officer here in Palm Beach County, is we're going to talk about different materials, resources that are available to your children and other persons in your community that they can use over the summer to help make sure that they don't slide back over the summer, but in fact, they actually go forward, that they come back to school in August with even more skills, even better prepared than they were. I want to take time really quickly to introduce you all to Dr. Glenda Sheffield. Dr. Sheffield, if you don't mind waving your hand. She's a 30-year employee of Palm Beach County School District. I first met her... Yeah, that is something, isn't it? I first met her 20 years ago when I was a teacher at Palm Beach Lakes, the year before I went to law school. Now, Doc, you did not run me off. You are a great AP, and I'm so happy to see all the success that you have been blessed with as an employee of Palm Beach County District since I left. And so I see her probably more than just about any other district employee down at the district office aside from the superintendent. I love her energy, I love her knowledge, and it occurred to me that, hey, if I'm about giving resources and getting information out to the people, who better than Dr. Sheffield as a Chief Academic Officer to come out and do a presentation? On that note, can we please turn our phones to silent or vibrate? Always one in the audience. And that person shall not be named. But to that point, I would like to recognize the other district employees who have come here. Dr. Lee, Dr. Coleman, please stand to be recognized. These persons are very influential and kind of the head honchos, as I like to say here on the Northern District of Palm Beach County, and they've been great resources to myself as well. So I really appreciate you all taking time to come out tonight as well. I also want to take time to recognize the city council people from Riviera Beach. I see Mrs. Lanier, Ms. Botell, and Mr. Lawson, Chairman Lawson from Riviera Beach. Please stand and wave, let everybody know. And of course, we have the illustrious Chris Cade, Officer Chris Cade, in the room, so now we can really get started. Tier four? Okay, we're good now. We're good. All right. So hey, y'all, this is, again, this is just meant to be a dialogue. I'm really committed to sharing information to the community. I think that as an elected official, that's the least I can do, is kind of give you all access to the information to help make your lives better, make your families' lives better. So this is my second town hall. It won't be the last, God willing. But again, we're going to have a good time tonight, sharing the information with you all. I'm going to speak for the first part of the town hall, then I'm going to sit down and let Dr. Sheffield go through some very specific and kind of detailed things that honestly, that's why we pay her the big bucks, so she's going to kind of walk you all through that. And then we're going to talk about some of the summer programs and enrichment programs that are available throughout District Seven, which is Riviera Beach, West Palm Beach, Magonia Park, Lake Worth, Boynton, Lantana, and Delray, as well as other programs that are available outside, oh, in the other areas of Palm Beach County as well. So without any further ado, we're going to get started with our Town Hall Two, which is the Summer Academic Programming: Using Summer Break to Jumpstart Your Child's Future Success. Slide, please. So you all know that I love QR codes, so if you use your phone right now to scan this QR code, you'll get all the slides that we're going to review today, because I don't believe that you should be cut off from this information if you don't have a pen or pencil or can't watch it on Riviera Beach TV or something like that. So just go ahead and take a moment to scan that QR code and all the slides that we are going to share with you. You will have access to make use of as you see fit and share with other people as you see fit. Oh, I want to say hey to the honcho, the governor, my wife, Keely. I'm surprised, I didn't know y'all were coming in, I appreciate that. So that's Keely, my son Xavier. Xavier, you want to say hi to everybody? Okay, and Abby, you want to say hi? She said hi, okay. Sitting on the front row. Well, you can't come up here with me though, buddy, so go ahead and say "my mom." Okay. Oh, can I get it later? Okay, go ahead. Sit with mommy, we'll get a donut later, okay. All right, slide, please. All right, so if you know anything about me, you know that in my opinion, the first piece of education is that early education piece. So right now, we have a lot of our children who are starting kindergarten, and what we would call, we would say they're not kindergarten-ready. And so it occurred to me that a lot of children who start behind, overwhelming number of children who start behind tend to stay behind, but conversely, those children who start ahead, those children who start school equipped with some of these basic skills, they tend to stay ahead. So Glenn, if you wouldn't mind, can you click on the link that says "What Your Kindergarten Should Know"? So as he pulls that up, I'll just say this. The district has a lot, a wealth of information that's available on this website, but I've noticed in speaking with some parents, sometimes it can be kind of intimidating trying to navigate the website because there's just so much information. So what I did in conjunction with Dr. Sheffield and Dr. Adam Miller is, we kind of pulled some of the relevant resources from the district website and put it into this presentation today. So for example, just hold right there, Glenn. So for example, in regard to being kindergarten-ready, if you read these four pages, you will pretty much be up to speed on what we're expecting of your child before he or she, when he or she comes to kindergarten. So some basic things. So for example, if you can believe this, by the end of kindergarten, they say that your child should know your first name, their first name and their last name, should be able to recognize all 26 letters of the alphabet, but as has been explained to me, that's actually something that we try to determine if you have shown mastery of on day one of kindergarten. So really effectively, we're looking for our four-year-olds to show this mastery. And to be honest, it's something that I think all four-year-olds, well, I know all four-year-olds have the ability to master, and they should master. So again, if you just go to this page, kind of familiarize yourself with all the different information. I don't want to spend time reading it to you, because I know you all can do that at your own leisure, but it'll help make sure that our children have a leg up from day one of kindergarten and even VPK or Pre-K4. Next slide, Glenn. So this is another big point, words. So there are words called adult words. So for example, you know what, Glenn, let's click on pre-kindergarten, since I'm speaking so much about early childhood education. So these are our children who are going to be that age two, three, and four years old. These are the words that we would expect a child of four years, by age four, to show mastery. And if you can believe it, if you believe it or not, some children at four don't know these words. And it's really just a matter of just kind of maybe creating a handful of flashcards, reviewing them with the child every day, maybe five to 10 words, to just help familiarize them with these basic words. And you all can see those words there. All right, let's go back to the original slide, Glenn, and let's go down, for example, to third grade. So when our child is about eight years old, these are the 41 words that we believe they should show mastery of as well, in addition to all the other words that we've expected them to master at pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, first, second grade, et cetera. So in third grade, you see these words: about, better, six, warm, if, et cetera. We can do this with our kids at home, and it doesn't take a whole lot of time, you know, five to 10 flashcards or whatever your child's attention span will afford. Let's push them, let's push them along. Let's push them along. They're our children. You know, Dr. Sheffield was great as a principal, but first and foremost, they're our children. So we have that immediate responsibility to make sure our kids are getting the information and encouragement that they need at home. And honestly, what happens at school, it should be augmenting what we're doing at home. Does that sound right to y'all? Does that sound right to y'all? Can I get an amen? I mean, go on. I'd rather get Dr. Lee up here to start preaching. Let's go to the next slide, Glenn. All right, so again, with reading and writing, again, you can click on all those different little links, and you can, it's just a wealth of information. We could spend two hours just reviewing each of those hyperlinks. So I'm just kind of showing it to you right now, and I'm strongly encouraging you, as your schedule permits, to kind of go through it, figure out what works best for you and your child, and just have at it over the summer. Slide, please. Math. This is always something that we spend a lot of time in school and speaking with principals and teachers, it's something that we spend a lot of time in at school trying to make sure that Johnny or Jane is up to par in math, but we have this information that we can be using over the summer so that our children are ahead of where even their teacher expects them to be. So in my mind, a child in the second grade who we may have certain expectations of mastery of certain principles of math, I would that they be at the level three or four, or whatever the case may be. I mean, the sky's the limit. And again, this information is free, you don't have to pay for it, just click on those links, five to 10 minutes a day, 30 minutes a day, whatever, again, whatever your schedule, whatever your child's attention span, because I understand with these two little young ones here, they only have a certain limited time, and then it's kind of shutting it down, and you might want to just move on to something else. But let's try to encourage them and push them every single day. Next slide, please. Science. You know what, let's click on this one, Glenn, because I noticed that a lot of our students struggle with the sciences in school. And I've asked different principals and educators as to the reason why, and it's, there's no one reason why, but in my mind, I think it's just attention to it. Maybe we need to do a better job at home of exposing our children to these things, these science experiments and what have you, to try to get them interested in it. So Glenn, you know what, let's click on, I don't know, let's click on second grade. Let's see what, let's see what a good second-grade science experiment would be. So as you can see, there's just a wealth of information on this one page, but it all kind of falls under the science umbrella. Again, we could spend two hours just kind of going through just the second-grade thing, which we're not, but again, I want to expose you to it, and again, just encourage you, five, 10, 15 minutes a day, spending with your child, your nieces, nephews, neighbors, it doesn't matter, just putting it out there for them and for their benefit. Social Studies is a course that, all things being equal, it seems like a greater majority of our children show, they perform well on social studies. And we have a few principals here, we have Ms. Kerners, who is the principal here at Suncos. Thank you, Ms. Kerners, for opening up your auditorium. And I believe that's Mrs. Granger sitting next to her, she is the principal at Bethune Elementary, which is here in Riviera Beach as well. But when you look at the annual test scores, social studies generally is a higher, is a higher metric than, say, science or English or math. So apparently, our students get social studies, but having said that, they can get it more. And so again, at your leisure, you can click on any of those links, and you'll find social studies-related material that can help you and your child. Next slide, Glenn. These are going to be our Brain Pops, so they're QR scans, so I can't really open them up, but similar to what we did before, you just hover your camera over it, and you can go into a number of different exercises that are related to math. And as you can see, it's for kindergarten to second grade, third grade to fifth grade, and it's home activities. So it's not just pen to paper, it's them, you know, using water bottles or cell phones or pens, or just interactive things where they're doing math, they're processing but not even knowing that they're processing. So we want to always kind of keep it fun, because remember, they're children, so you don't necessarily want to and necessarily need to be so serious and stern like we're in a court of law, whatever the case may be. We can learn with a smile on our face, cracking jokes and things of that nature, if you will. Next slide, Glenn. Now, the Early Learning Coalition is doing a great job. I actually serve as the liaison for the school board with the ELC. And in fact, we're going to be doing something in June, so there are going to be several town halls that I'm doing in June to help try to increase the number of parents who register their kids for VPK. But in any event, the team over at the ELC sent me the following slides, just to kind of advise you all of different programs that are available here in Palm Beach County. So Glenn, let's go to the next slide, please. So you have the Youth Services Camp, again, you have your QR code there, you click on that, there's a lot of information that you'll see there. Next slide, please. The Bridges Summer Reading Program. So Bridges is, I believe, in 10 of our cities, or definitely has 10 sites, I'll say that. I know they have 10 sites. They have one here in Riviera Beach, I know they have one in West Palm, I believe I've been to the one, I believe I've been to the one in Delray, but in any event, you know what, I should have read my slide. Those are the ZIP codes where you would likely find a Bridges program, but they're really good with helping provide wraparound services for families, particularly families who may be on the lower end of the economic spectrum. Bridges does a good job in that regard. So if you have need for additional services, reach out to your local Bridges, they've always been a great, a great help to the community. Next slide, please. Palm Beach County Library System. Again, everybody knows what the deal is. We know that reading is leading. Like, my kids joke at me sometime, they say, "Daddy, reading is leading," and they smile as they read their books. But we want to increase our children's vocabulary, we want to increase their ability to comprehend language, because that's how they're going to be successful in life, being able to communicate their needs and understanding what other persons are communicating to them. We have a large number of children who are not necessarily as proficient as they need to be when it comes to just reading our primary language, which is English, and I think we can, we can stop that and we can end that deficit, if you will, by, again, just working with them, five, 10, 15 minutes every single day on things like reading, asking them to repeat back to us, "Now, what did you read? I know that you said 'See John Run,' but what does that mean to you?" So just having that kind of conversation. And a lot of these materials that I'm kind of glossing over frankly through the time constraints, kind of will walk you through how to go about doing that, to optimize your interaction with your child. Next slide, Glenn. So National Summer Learning Association, I clicked on this earlier, there's a whole lot of stuff there. So again, just like I said before, we could be here for two hours, but take time to look at that when you're at home, there are contact numbers and emails in there, so if you want to reach out to persons who are associated with NSLA, you can do that, and that'll be a great thing to do. Next slide. All right, so this is kind of the reason for wanting to have this town hall, and it'll be bigger and better next year. But and Dr. Sheffield, she and I, I was in her office a few days ago, and I was saying, "You know, Doc, I read something that said that some children lose up to a month's worth of knowledge over the summer, the so-called summer slide." Well, she said, "Well, you know, Mr. Ferguson, it's actually more like two to three months." And then I did some additional research and saw that, yeah, the consensus is it's somewhere between one to three months. If we're not careful, our children will lose upwards of one to three months of what they just learned over the summer. So it's imperative, like, kind of like exercise, if you will, if you're a weightlifter, if you stop lifting weights, your body atrophies. If you stop learning each day, reading, doing math, science experiments, social studies, what have you, some of that stuff is lost. And so now what you find yourself doing is trying to play catch-up in that first nine weeks or even two weeks of the next semester, which puts you at a deficit to those children who are doing these things that we're talking about. So it's very imperative that we do what we need to do as a community to make sure that our kids stay moving up as opposed to falling back. So I'm not going to read this all to you, but the point is, we have to make sure that the summer is a period of growth as opposed to stagnation or regression. Next slide. So now, without any further ado, the star of the show, Dr. Glenda Sheffield, is going to walk you through these topics, and these are some things that are very, very important and some things that frankly, we need to do a better job of making sure that the community is aware of and how to make use of them. So Dr. Sheffield, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Dr., thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Again, good evening, everyone. It's definitely great having an opportunity to come this evening just to talk about some of the work that we are doing here in terms of trying to continue to maximize the learning opportunities for our students. There are so many pieces to this. Of course, we have to break it up in segments in regards to what that approach looks like. So I am just excited, but I tell you, I don't do this any justice. This is definitely work that's not being done alone. When I sit here and we talk about District Seven, of course, you very well, this could have, should have been, you know, Dr. Long, Mr. Lee, you know, and Dr. Lee, they're actually the ones here that are out there supporting the schools, such as Ms. Kerners, Ms. Granger themselves. So definitely kudos to them and the work that they are doing. Just an extension in terms of how we are collaborating and trying to close those instructional gaps that we see without students. But then at the same time, in regards to closing those instructional gaps that we are finding without students, what is it that we can do as a system to continue to enhance the instructional pedagogy of those students that are already there? How do we take them from already being great to being even greater? So this is definitely a building piece, tonight is just a small segment of it. So but what we're going to do this evening is really talk about the programs and the opportunities that several of our students are going to have an opportunity to participate in over the summer. Not saying that this is all great, but it's definitely a start for us. The first part that I want to talk about and shed some light on, but before I get into the programs, you could see here, I'm not going to read the slides, but our summer, our extension, I should say, our extended learning for the summer is going to start June 6th, and it's going to go through July 13th. And we have the times there for our various programs where elementary students, it's pretty much an all-day program from 8:30 to 2:20, and then you can see our secondary, which is our middle and high school students, their date is a little shorter, and you will understand why as I go through in regards to what are some of those targeted programs and so forth. I'm going to start with one of our elementary programs, and here on this slide is talking about our Rising Stars. These are our students, our current kindergarten students, kindergarten students that are going to first and so on. So we're going to have our, we're going to have Rising Programs for our first, second, and fourth grade students. These programs are going to, of course, focus on our students' reading and math skills, along with these programs and continuing to build on those foundational skills that we are finding our students, that they are a little weak in, and we are wanting to set them and get them on that path, so when they start school in the fall, that the teachers can continue to build and enhance on those foundational skills. Now, the students that have been identified for these particular programs, we did have some data metrics, and the data metrics, and of course, in which we've used, and we've provided, you know, the principals, the listing of students that we identified there from a district standpoint and looking at their assessments throughout the year, and then also, we said to principals that you have Johnny there every day, you and that teacher, you know Johnny's capability, they may be some students that we've identified that you feel that can continue to work in other aspects, but not necessarily during this particular program. And then you may say that there are some that we did not identify that you want to add, and that's where the principals work alongside with the parents to talk about in regards to what does that extended learning should look like for their son or daughter and so forth. So there is some space there. So there we have the Rising Programs for our first, second, and fourth grade. Then we go on, and of course, we talk about, what we all hate to talk about is that mandatory retention in grade three for those students that are having difficulty and have not, you know, scored proficiency there on that required state mandated reading test. So that's our summer, that's our third-grade Reading Academy. We are continuing to work with our third-grade students, those students that are struggling and have some gaps there and did not do as well. So that's a particular program for those students that we're using strictly their state, spring state scores for, that they did not do well, we're bringing them in over the summer, we are really drilling down, working with the student, working with the families, and giving them some additional opportunities. Some of those students may, of course, get the mark there in over the summer. Those students will, of course, go on to fourth grade, not just go on to fourth grade, but they're going to go with that support if they meet the required benchmark. Coming to third-grade Reading Academy does not necessarily give them an automatic move to fourth grade if they did not meet those state requirements. Some will, some will not. Those students that did not make it over the summer will have an opportunity to what we call mid-year promotion, and that must take place by November 1st. But first and foremost, and I keep stressing in regards to any of these students, and as we talk about them progressing, and we're continuing to work with them over the summer, working with them over the summer is one piece, but the team comes together and we look in regards to how these students are performing academically, and we develop and work alongside with the teachers, with the principals, and developing action plans, trying to set our students up for success. First and foremost, the school is one leg of it. It has to be the other piece, and that comes from where? From working with the families at home, working with the community, and all the other agencies that are out there providing the opportunities and support for our students as we are continuing wanting to maximize their learning. Then we will go over on that, you know, over to the green there, which talks about our ESE Extended, and these are our students that are in our Exceptional Student Education Program. Now, we know if you have a child that's within our Exceptional Student Education Program, the individual educational plan drives what kind of support those students will receive over the summer. Those are our ESE students. It's very granular in regards to the kind of support that we would receive. Very much similar in regards to the students that are participating in our ESOL and our dual-language program, which will be prescribed, particularly with our ESOL students, around their LEP plan. And then, of course, with our dual-language is where we are continuing to work on their, work on their language skills. And then we will go on talking about our algebra support. We have two different kinds of programs that we're going to be running for our algebra support. Reason being, I'll tell you why. We look at algebra as what I call as a gatekeeper. It's a course that will keep our students from graduating high school. So we call it's a gatekeeper, because if they don't, do not successfully pass that Algebra I EOC or obtain that concordant score, it will keep them from graduating. So what we're looking at particularly here, and you see grade eight and nine, and I'll start with our grade eight, the kind of support that we are providing for those select students that may have been identified to participate. These students are currently our eighth-grade students that are in our middle schools. These students will go to ninth grade next year. We're saying, you know what, we're committed, but with these students going to ninth grade, we know the students, we've had them here on our middle school campuses for three years. But what we do know is that these students are lacking some foundational skills that's going to keep them from being successful when they get to ninth grade and go into Algebra I. So if we already know this as a system, the why not put into place some kind of bootcamp or a program to where we can cluster these students and really get ahead in working on those foundational skills that we have found that these students are lacking before they start school there in August? How great is that, right? So these students are getting a jumpstart. So that's these eighth-grade students that will then go on to ninth grade. That's one of the algebra programs that we are running this summer. When you see the other ones that says grade nine, what that particular program looks like, that algebra program, is different from the program that I just described to you for our current eighth-grade students that may be lacking in some of those foundational skills that's going to keep them from being successful in Algebra I when they enter ninth grade. The grade nine, what you see there, and it's not just necessarily grade nine, it could be grade nine, 10, or 11, meaning that these students have successfully taken algebra, they have passed their algebra course. However, these students have not yet passed successfully their state Algebra I end-of-course exam. Remember what I said earlier, the algebra is a course that we consider to be a gatekeeper. So you have passed the course, you have your course credit, however, you're having difficulty passing that state exam. So then we have, we are bringing in these students that are needing that additional support, and we are putting some strategies and some cadence around that end-of-course exam, around test-taking skills, some, just some strategies and really digging deep to see where our students are struggling, to where you have passed the course, but you're really struggling here with this end-of-course exam. That's what the second part to that looks like, that's the difference. Both of these courses are going to be on our high school campuses. You will see in just a minute in regards to, for District Seven, what those cluster sites are and the campuses in which we're going to be running some of these programs that I'm talking about here this evening. And then, of course, we have our Drive-A-Sed. Our Drive-A-Sed program, you know, is very, is very limited, they only take a certain number of students. I think I'll go a little deeper in some slides that are coming up. And if you can go to the next slide piece, please. And I always do this, as we're talking about these programs, because you've planning behind the scene, and we've already talked about it, because I think I gave you a quick synopsis of each of the programs from that first slide, but the irony of it all is that you're going to get, you're going to have a copy of this slide deck. So if you forget in regards to, as I was doing the overview, it's already here for you. So then what I'm going to say is that if you have, you know, if you have a child, elementary, middle or high school that are involved in any of these kind of programs that you think they may be eligible for, then that's where you reach out to the school and then you talk through it. Now, for this particular one, like I told you, around the first, second, and fourth grade students, our Rising Stars, I'm not going to read this to you, because I already talked about what the focus would be, looking at those reading and those math skills. But most importantly, it's not about just a sit-and-get all day like they do during the instructional day. We want to make certain that we also include some of that project-based learning and some of those real-life experiences, and make it fun for our students while they're learning at the same time. If you go on to the next, thank you. And then, of course, and this was the third grade where we really talked about, you know, our third-grade students, these students that are in third grade now, they're doing now, I think, Dr. Long, they're already currently doing their third-grade state assessment, Progress Monitoring III. So these students are doing Progress Monitoring III now. So you can imagine, you know, the eight-year-olds, and they know what is at stake for them, and it is a lot. So we are monitoring, we're seeing what's happening, and then these are the students that we are working alongside, not just with the students, because they're eight years old. They're not going to be able to digest in regards to what just happened, but working with the families as well, and to look to see for those students that may be caught here within this third-grade mandatory retention, what their, what that support is going to look like over the summer. And again, it's coming through that third-grade, you know, Summer Reading Academy, we also have the portfolio. The portfolio is where we are collecting samplings of work and putting together a portfolio of facts in regards to, they may not have made it there on the state assessment, but having some evidence, um, that can show that we think that this, the child will be able to move on with the matrix that have been provided to us by D O E that will align to that portfolio. And if we go on to the next slide, and this next slide here just talked about as I was talking earlier around our E S E and our E L L students and the programs that we are having there for those students. And as I said, particularly with our E S E students, we know the students that are identified for our E S E program, we call it E S Y. These students are identified based on their individual educational plan, very prescriptive in regards to dealing with what their immediate needs are. And then I'm not going to continue here. This is the algebra support. And remember what I said? There were two different kinds of algebra support that we are providing. This particular program here is very new to us this summer that we are providing as an extension to our summer learning. And again, we are making the decision based on what the data is saying. Um, I think it was last board meeting, Mr. Ferguson, to where we talked about, and you probably have read a lot that's been going on in the news recently, in regards to some of the changes, the changes around the concordant scores and our students being able to graduate high school, well, the algebra falls into those concordant scores. Concordant scores meaning that if they're not and they're still struggling, they are passing that end of course exam, algebra being one of it, um, one of those exams, then if they do not pass the end of course exam, that state exam, there is another way that they can get that concordant score to where they will be able to graduate high school without that end of course exam per se, but they must have the concordant score. A concordant score meaning that they could get a certain score on the A C T or on the S A T. You didn't get it on the end of course exam, but you obtain that required score from S A T or A C T. And this year, what was just decided a few weeks ago, the state have decided that they will bring back and allow those students to also get that concordant score using what we call P E R T. P E R T is the exam that our students take when they are wanting to go in for dual enrollment at the community college. Now, they have brought in P E R T back this year to say that those students can get that concordant score for that algebra utilizing P E R T, but guess what? They raised the score. They raised that requirement from 97 to 114. So you could see why we are so indebted and we are committed in regards to really utilizing the data to help us determine the kind of support and strategizing what we need to do to help our students reach this milestone of graduating high school. So that's why we really have these two big pieces here. You can go to the next slide. And then of course we talked about the Drive As Ed. And the Drive As Ed, of course, we have the pieces there by where they must be 15 of age by June 6th. And there are select spots and then you will contact, of course, your school or what have you, you will see in a minute on the slides and where we're going to have the sites. And we do have it capped at 50 students at each site. You can go to the next slide. Okay. And the, on this particular slide here, this particular slide, as I kept talking around in regards to the sites that we are offering for the summer, on this particular slide around all of our summer offerings for elementary, all of our elementary schools are not open. So what we have done, we have worked with the regional, um, with the regional offices and they have identified those cluster sites, meaning the cluster sites in terms of what sites are actually hosting all of our summer programs, our summer extended learning. On this particular slide, I'll give you an example. When you see like Alamanda, Alamanda is our E S E cluster site. So all of our students from, from Eisenhower, Jupiter L Elementary, those students are going to be going to Alamanda. Here in Riviera, you are very much familiar with, um, you're very much familiar with Lincoln, Lincoln Elementary. Well, you could see our precious students, our scholars, um, from Bethune Elementary, Grove Park, Northmore, Washington, and West Riviera, those students that have been selected to participate in the extended learning over the summer, they're going to be going where? They're going to be going to Lincoln. So that's just an example so that when you're reading this, you could see, no, we do not have all of our sites open, they are actually clustered. So those are the elementary schools up top. When you come down in the middle, which is our middle school site, our middle school sites, and our middle school sites, I have to tell you, it's a little different. Our middle school program is all around what we call middle school course recovery. Middle school course recovery, what that is utilized for, that's utilized for our students that have struggled and may be behind in what we call quality points. Quality points is in terms of the number of points or credits that they need to move from one grade to the next. So those students have had some hiccups. They may have failed a course for various reasons, you know? And so we really take time, we look to see where those hiccups are. And we are working with those students, not just during the summer, middle school course recovery is actually taking place the entire year. But for those students that are still having some quality points of some courses that they may be behind in or may have failed, they are having an opportunity to make up and get those points over the summer. That's what we're doing with our middle school students. So that's the middle school course recovery. And the middle school course recovery, our middle school students, you could see, you will see in a minute in terms of where some of those students will be. And Dwyer High is actually our high school site to where it's going to be housing many of our students. And you could see there, that's listed below in regards to the schools that were actually there, we going to Dwyer. So if you have students at Palm Beach Gardens or at Palm Beach Lakes, those students for the summer is going to be going over to Dwyer High School. Um, for those select programs that are there. And then I'm going to stress this, for the high school, high school is a little different. All of our high schools are open and I'll explain to you why high schools, all our high schools are open in just a minute. But for the programs that you see, A S D, like E S C, the Rising Ninth Grade, the Algebra One Support, that's those two algebra courses that I was talking about, as well as Drive As Ed, those are the only programs that are offered at our cluster site. I'm going to explain to you in a minute the kind of programs that are offered on all of our high school campuses and why we found it necessary to have all of our high school campuses open. The next slide. Okay. Before I go on, and I think it will come, and let me go ahead and go this slide. I don't want to forget to tell you why about the high schools in just a minute. But alongside with offering all of those summer programs that I've talked about earlier, you will see that not just offering those programs, bringing our students in, trying to maximize their learning opportunities, what's also important for us as a district and we talk a lot about, it's great to talk about the students and what it is that we need to do to enhance the instructional opportunities for our students. But we are also committed and understand that we need to be just as intentional and deliberate about the professional development and enhancing the instructional pedagogy of our teachers. So this is a time too, over the summer, that we work with our teachers and continue to provide those professional development and enhancing those opportunities there for our teachers as well. While our students are there this summer participating in extended learning, not only will the staff be obtaining some additional professional development, but our students, school food service is also going to be providing the meals for our students. All of these students, they're going to be receiving transportation and as well, we're going to make certain, and it is required that we have a school safety officer on our, on all of our campuses where instruction is indeed taking place. And that's why it was important that we had to cluster many of our sites because we want to make certain that all of our campuses are safe. All of our officers are not year-round officers. So then we needed to look and we needed to identify to make certain that we had coverage and that not only were we focusing on closing and dealing with those instructional losses and how do we continue to maximize, but also safety must continue to be a top priority for us. So that's some of the adjustment that we have made in making certain that was occurring over the summer. You can go to the next slide. Okay. This is where I was talking in regards to what was happening and why all of our high school campuses needed to be open. And we talk about here where you see where it says graduation, um, support academy. This is why. When our students come into us and our families send their students to us, say from pre-K up until grade 12, they have one expectation and that expectation is to see their child what? Graduate high school, right? We owe that. We owe it to, to you, we owe it to each other and we understand that this is definitely us all working together. So in doing so, all our high schools are opening because for those students that are still having difficulty in regards to some of those areas that we call gatekeepers, such as those concordant scores, like getting their E L A, you know, they must still pass reading, they must also pass, remember I said earlier, that algebra, the Algebra E O C and so forth? So these students that are still, our juniors and our seniors, that are still struggling or having some difficulty meeting those requirements, those students will be back on their high school campuses, working with their teachers, working with their administrators that they are very, very much familiar with. It will be a disservice to send students, our juniors and our seniors that have been on these high school campuses, say for four years, over to an unfamiliar site, working with adults, working with teachers or administrators that they have not built or fostered those relationships with because we know every child is different. So when we are trying to set our students up for success, we want to make certain that we are doing just that in that short period of time. So that's why we have and we've committed to having those high school campuses open. So we know this is the time of season, all of our schools are getting ready for graduation for the class of 2023. I'm excited, it's former high school principals, the favorite, my favorite time of the year. I love it. And, but we're going to have some students that may not have made it with their, with their, with their class come that spring ceremony. But those students are still going to have an opportunity to continue their learning, continue working on whatever requirement it is, to where they can continue to be part of that cohort for the class of 2023. Guess what? And they will be doing that over the summer, they meet those requirements, then they will participate in our summer graduation in July. So that's why we found it necessary to keep our campuses open. So if they didn't get it, they're still having some, some gaps, we're going to continue to work with them over the summer. That's the class of 2023. The class of 2024, our current juniors that are rising to be seniors next year, well, we already know some of those gaps and we already know where some of those students, where the assistance is that they're going, that they're needing. So if they're still needing that Algebra One E O C, they're still trying to get their concordant scores, and we still have students that are working on their A C T, students that are working on their S A T scores as they are now filling out college applications and so forth, guess what? They're going to have an opportunity because that's another program that we are running on our high school campuses, A C T S A T prep. So not only the A C T S A T prep is around those concordant scores, of course, that's where we start first, but as the room and space opens up, then those that are wanting to continue to hands and build and trying to increase those A C T S A T scores for applications and so forth, that's where they work with the school, where they work with their principals and so forth, to see if there is space or an opportunity for them to partake. So those are the two big pieces that we are having on our high school campuses that again, that we consider to be detrimental in regards to our students successfully completing and graduating high school, which is our primary goal. And then we also talked about, um, I never talked about V P K. V P K, Mr. Ferguson mentioned that earlier, V P K for families that have not used their vouchers, this is important. You only can use your vouchers over the summer, I mean, only can get a voucher for the summer if you do not use it during the year for our families that are in need of V P K vouchers. The Early Learning Coalition is the agency that provide those vouchers. We have two schools which are going to be housing our V P K. I know, um, I have to go back to the slide, it's actually within the slides that we've identified, I can't remember them offhand, but then we, okay, thank you, you're going to go back. Yes, thank you. Our V P K site is going to be at, um, let's see. It is in here, um, just keep going, it's in here. Yeah, no, just catch me back up. Don't worry about the slide, just go back to where we left off. Okay, thank you. Um, and actually Berkshire, Berkshire, it's right there, having a senior moment. Berkshire is the V P K site that District Seven students will participate, will go to if they get that voucher and have not used the voucher during this year. And then of course I've already talked about our middle school course recovery, don't need to spend a lot more time there because our middle school course recovery, that's those students, middle school students that are behind in their quality points and that's going to be on their middle school campuses unless they've been told otherwise. We have like three, I think we have like three schools, um, Dr. Long, that have clustered up on, with another site. And then of course we have our Jump Start. This Jump Start is very unique. This Jump Start program here, they, students must be identified, this is not where a parent called and say that, you know, my child has been retained, I need my child to, you know, to be moved on, or we say skip up a grade. What we have with the Jump Start program, we have actually two Jump Start program. We have one for elementary and we have one for, um, one with our middle school students. The elementary is our fourth grade students that have already been retained twice. Those students participate, um, participate successfully in this Jump Start program if they meet the qualifications and they successfully complete the Jump Start program in the summer, those students will transition to sixth grade in the fall, but they will be clustered as a group on each campus that they're going to with that additional support. That's what that particular program looks like. The Jump Start for elementary is actually taking place on Lake, at Lake Worth Middle School on their campus. Then our Jump Stop for high school, the difference there is that it's our seventh grade students with those double retentions. Those students, if they successfully complete the program, then those students will go to grade nine, they'll be clustered with that additional support. But just coming to either of those programs, that's not necessarily mean that you will just go from grade four onto middle school. They must successfully complete the program and the Jump Stop program is not four days a week. It's actually five days a week and it's actually a week longer than all of our other sites, all of our other programs. And the next slide, I think I should be coming up to the end. And this piece is very dear to my heart, I love it, um, which is, you know, the S R dollars, we, and with COVID, we've learned a lot. And we, when we came back from COVID, um, it seemed like it's been forever. You know, our students had, they really had, they, let's face it, they've lost a lot because it was nothing like being in the classroom, working with your teachers, um, face to face. There, um, let's, it's, you know, we did the best we can. No one had ever saw this coming. There was no playbook for what we call distance learning. So when our students returned back to the classroom, we just needed to try to figure out and look for ways that we can continue to provide support to our students and to the families outside of the, outside of school. So in thinking of that, then we found this platform, um, which is called Paper. It's 24/7 online tutoring platform. Um, it's amazing. And we are going into our third year. We did receive funding for this year to continue, um, so we will have it one more year because of course this is one of our big, one of our big pieces that we use quite a bit of our S R dollars for, to provide the opportunities for our students. Here, our students have access to all the different subject matters and this is only for our secondary students, our middle and our high school students. Students, they contact, you know, they have their sign-ons, they know how to utilize it. We've done some parent webinars, um, to where our, you know, our paper, our paper reps, you know, they've worked with our families, they've worked with our students, to our families know in regards to the opportunities that are there. What we're going to be doing in the fall, we're going to be doing an additional webinar for our families to where they could log on. We're going to do some trainings because many times the families don't realize in regards to the opportunities that are there for their students. I used to tell my, my personal kids, I would say, once they got past, when they got to trig, I would say, let me tell you, when you get to that math class, you make sure you sit on the front row because mama and daddy cannot help you once you got to trig. And I tell you, if I had something like this, because this is what And I tell you, if I had something like this, because this is what would have been a lifesaver in my home. When you talk about paying seventy, ninety dollars an hour for a chemistry tutor, it gets very expensive, right? Guess what? They log on 24/7, they can upload their assignment. The tutor is not doing the work for them, the tutor is helping them. And not only that, the tutor and the work that they are doing with the tutors, the teachers actually have the capability of pulling the transcript to see the kind of assistance that their student have been involved in with the tutor. So when they come back to class, the teacher can even dig deeper in working alongside to see the issue at hand. That's, that's very unique, right? And I'm giving you the short version because time is of limited. But I want to encourage you to ask your, particularly your middle school or your high school students, say, tell me about that paper. If they haven't been on it, then I want you to like follow up with the school. You can reach out to me. Definitely be willing to give you some additional information. I even connect you with our paper rep that we have assigned here just to the school district of Palm Beach County. You can go to the next slide. And then on this particular slide here, it just talks about our extended learning. And again, these are our 21st Century Camps that's going to be available this summer. You know, the 21st Century Camp, it does have an academic component to it. So our students will be involved in fun field activities. Not just fun field activities, but they'll be doing field trips. And there'll also be some academic pieces involved. You could see here, the content areas in terms of like some things that they're going to be working on around. They're reading their literacy, you got your science, you got the STEM. You got, you know, some of that SEL. And also, you know, your physical ed, just keeping them active. These are the participating schools here that will have the 21st Century in District Seven. You can go to the next slide. And just this goes on around some of our school-based summer camps. Our school-based summer camps, these are the schools that will be having some additional camps that they are running on their individual campuses that they are actually designing. These are camps that are not centralized. Centralized meaning from, through the district office. The next slide. And then of course, you know, our students of the arts, students that are participating in our band camps. Then of course, if they're in the music industry and they'll reach out to their schools to learn more about the marching band camp and that intensive training program that they could be involved in here over the summer. You can go to the next slide. And here we talked about the Riviera Beach Literacy Project. Mr. Ferguson, is this you?
Thank you, Dr. Sheffield. So just for paper and the, and the resources that, that we discussed at the beginning of the, of the seminar today, or town hall today, I think, I hope you all see value there. Because if we use paper and also if we use those, those materials that we discussed at the beginning of the, of the presentation, I think very few of our children will fall into that category that Dr. Sheffield spoke about in regard to needing the remedial courses over the summer, what have you. In any event, this next piece is going to go pretty quick. Again, I've mentioned to you all, District Seven is comprised of seven cities. So I reached out to all seven cities to ask for their summer-related programs. So I tried to kind of condense it, and we're going to move through this pretty quick. So firstly, Riviera Beach's library system, they have their Riviera Beach Literacy Project. Next slide, please. It's from May 30th, so registration is actually now. So if your child is interested in, in attending, you can contact them at the number that's on the right-hand side, which is the 561-845-4070. And it runs right up near the beginning of school. So it would be a great program that your child can go to daily, through the weekdays at least, to kind of, like I said, make sure that they're enhancing and improving and not just kind of stopping for that month, month and a half or so, and then picking back up in January. There is a fee, twenty-five dollars per week for city residents, thirty dollars a week for non-city residents. But that, all in all, is a pretty, pretty good bang for your buck. Next slide, please. So this is a list of programs that Palm Beach County Youth Services provided me that are going to be housed here in Riviera Beach. Personally, I think that STEM, whenever we can get into a STEM program, let's try to target that. And it's color-coordinated, so the programs that are in blue are the STEM programs. The other programs are great too, but I'm just saying, if, if you can have your others. Generally speaking, I would say try to get into a STEM for sure. But you can see the names of the programs that are being operated here in Riviera Beach. Names of the program, name of the contact person, the phone number as well. But also, we have our enrichment programs, which are going to be more of that fuchsia color or pink. The so-called regular programs, Palm Beach County Service's words, not mine. And then also the special needs programs, which are going to be in orange. Next slide, please. All right, so the Town of Mangonia, they have a reading program that starts in the month of June. It is free to everyone. So whether your child lives in Mangonia Park or not, if you're interested in partaking in their program, this is the contact information. And I spoke with Town Manager Metcalf. He is stoked and looking forward to as many people who are in need, who want to join their program being made a part of that program. Next slide, please. City of West Palm Beach, much larger city, many, many, many more programs. Again, STEM is going to be in blue, so we don't have many STEM pro, I don't see any STEM programs actually for, well, that's not true. I don't see any STEM programs that are, are being run in West Palm Beach right now. But we do have the enrichment camp programs, which are in future, as I mentioned. Special needs programs in orange as well. So again, you have the slide deck kind of perused through it at your leisure. If something piques your interest, please give them a call and, and take advantage of the program. Next slide, please. The library system in West Palm Beach is pretty robust. I didn't have the, forgot to include the phone number in the slide, so I'm going to give that to you all right now. The number is 561-669-7703, 561-669-7703. Next slide. So this is the summer program. So as you can see, they have a lot of things going on at Gaines Park, which is off of Australian, for those who are not familiar with the city of West Palm Beach. They even have sailing on Lake Mangonia, which I would say, so long as it's done before noon, that's probably a great event to participate in during the summertime. Next, next slide, please. So the Town of Lake Worth, again, we have same, same color, color dynamics for, for the programs. Again, if you live in that Lake Worth area or are comfortable traveling, commuting to Lake Worth, this might be a great spot for you to, to have your child participate in programs as well. Next slide, please. City of Boynton Beach, have a few, few programs there as well. St. John Missionaries Baptist Church, I'm familiar with that church. I know they do a lot of good work there for the community as well. We also have a few specialty camps, STEM camps as well, the East Coast Flames All-Stars and M and S Community Stars of Performing Arts and Academics. So again, if you're in Boynton or, or, or looking to, or willing to commute to the Boynton area, these may be some programs that you can take advantage of. Next slide, please. Delray Beach, we have seven programs here. Pompey Park is, is a hub down there. They always have something positive going on at Pompey Park. Same statement as before. Next slide. So if you want to follow me, you can follow me on Twitter or on Instagram at EdwinFergusonFL. If you're more of a Facebook person, my, my account is Edwin Ferguson, Palm Beach County School Board Member, District Seven. I'm moving fast because I want to get to the Q and A. But also before I do that, two things. If anyone is thirsty, I believe we have water now that's just outside the exit. Mr. Cedric Thomas, Cedric can wave your hand. He brought that in for the group, so I appreciate that. I also want to recognize Dante. Dante, are you still here? Dante, come on up to the front. And is Ms. Kelly here? Don't see her, but okay. So Dante, Dante actually has a program. Some of you may have heard about it. He was doing it in collaboration with Palm Beach State. I told him I would give him 30 seconds. I just want him to introduce himself to you all. And if you all are interested in learning more about his program, he is here with his lovely wife, Dante.
Good afternoon, everybody. Well, good evening. What time is it? Okay. My wife and I started a nonprofit called Love, Hope and Healing. We partnered with Palm Beach State College to bring a skilled trades and career exploration summer camp to their campus for high school, underserved and underprivileged high school kids in the county. We bring them in to give them another option. Everybody's not, nope, everyone's not going the traditional route of schooling, so we want to get them another, another option. It's a five-week program. We're teaching the different trades, different career opportunities. So if you have any high school kids, feel free. Thank you.
Also, Ms. Marcia Kelly runs an ACT SAT Prep course here in Riviera Beach. Her contact number is 561-8600501, 561-8600501. I've done a little investigation into the program. They, they're doing good work. It's not uncommon to have students scoring 1400s and 1500s on SATs and doing very well on ACTs as well. And what's also good to know about that is their baseline scores when they initially got into the program were substantially lower. So Ms. Kelly and her team, I know William Wiley is a part of that team, they're doing something well. So you may want to reach out to her, speak to her. That may be of, of value to you and your family. I also want, before we go to Q and A, I believe I saw Commissioner Mac Bernard. I'm not sure if he's still here, but I wanted to recognize him. And I also saw Riviera Beach Commissioner or Councilman, Councilperson Tragic McCoy here earlier as well. I can't really see with the glare if you're still here, but I thank you all for coming in and, and gracing us with your presence. Now I want to stop talking because I imagine there are a few questions that you want to ask to Ms. Dr. Sheffield or possibly myself. So we want to spend the remainder of the time, which we're now at 7:13, so we're doing pretty good on time. If there are any questions, please raise your hand and we'll do our best to answer your question. Dr. Lee, you got a question? You put your hand up. I was just messing with you. Any questions, anybody? Yes, sir.
Yes, we don't have anything, you don't see anything rising for your fifth grader going to, to sixth? So what I will say to you is depending on where your child may be going to school, is you contact the school because these are all centralized programs for the district. And we do have some schools that are doing what we call one-offs, meaning that the schools could be having their own specialized programs. Not, all of them do not, but I would reach out to the school.
And to that point, also, take a look at the list of the county programs because I reached out to the Palm Beach County Recreation Parks Recreation Director. She told me that some of the programs do have a reading component there. So you may just want to reach out and, and kind of query them to determine, you know, what the extent of that, that reading part is. Okay? Great question. Any other questions, anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, for elementary students, no, we do not have anything similar to paper for, for elementary students. We are actively looking to see what that will look like. Because here with paper, we were intentional to where they do not have, it's not face-to-face where they're not having those direct contact because you have to be very, you want to be very careful with that. So right now, what we're looking at with elementary, we are researching. And what we're finding now is that it must, most companies are wanting the tutoring to be face-to-face with the parent and the child. So we do have, you know, all schools offer tutorial programs throughout the year. So again, I would say just make certain that you are following your school in regards to those tutoring and additional resources that they are offering during the academic year. Okay? But we also, if you go onto our website, I know which can get a little cumbersome, but under that parent and student tab, there is a tremendous amount of resources that you could utilize to assist with the work that you may want to do as a parent, you know, in terms of resources.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right. Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, all of the highs, like I said, the, all of our high schools are open this summer. And the high schools that are open this summer is for that graduation support. The graduation support, there are two, there are two umbrellas to that. The first one is around course recovery, meaning that those students that are behind and they're, they're behind in their credits. Because you know, they must have at least 24 credits to graduate high school. So they're behind in their credits. We use a platform called Edge Annuity so they could be working on their credits because they're hiding in credits. That's one. The second part to that is the ACT SAT Prep. All of the high schools will have the ACT SAT Prep. But the first group of students that will be, because of course, they're limited in terms of numbers, the first group of students, I should say priority, priority will be given to our seniors, the class of 2023, that are still trying to get those concordant scores. If space is available on that campus, then they will open it up to the class of 2024, meaning our juniors. So that's where you would work with the principal in regards to the space and the availability because we do have to prioritize class of 2023 and class of 2024.
Any other questions? All right, y'all. Well, that's it for us tonight. We really appreciate you all coming out. Like I said, just keep your eyes and ears open. We'll be having more and more town halls over the next two to three months. Again, oh, you do. Oh, come on up. You got a question? Would you like to address the people? Dr. Lee? Okay. Well, on behalf of Dr. Coleman and Dr. Lee, we want to thank you all for coming out tonight. And have a great evening. Take care.